To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote for please. Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. Asko?
Here.
Mr. Yanagus? Mr. Miller? Mr. Penner?
Here.
Mr. Nezzi?
Here.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
In accordance with terms of sunshine law, adequate notice this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, three newspapers that happened into on January 7th, 2025, took the advisors on school grounds etc. outside of any company, placed silence on all electronic devices, and pursuant to district files number 0167, each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant will speak more than once at the same time.
Thank you. Dr. Tansy, super chemistry report please.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We have a number of amazing presentations tonight, so I'm going to ask our athletic director, Linda Iontta, to come on up to the podium. Our first presentation this evening will be the presentation of the Fall Sports Awards.
Yeah? Good evening.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Linda Iontta, I am the interim athletic director, and we are here tonight to celebrate and honor our fall athletes. Within the agenda, you'll see we have both team and individual honors. We will just be reading the names of the athletes, and you can read alongside the agenda on exactly what they received. We're going to start off with Voice Cross Country. Yeah, well, anybody who's here when I call your name, please, I just want you to stand up, then you're going to go with Coach Johnson towards the back of the room. But first, our actual is our coach, Galen Johnson, who actually was the Gold Division GNC Coach of the Year. Nicholas DiGeronimo. Daniel Holman. Rafael Melendez. Christian Rotino. Angelo Piquet. Carter Patterson. Alexander Rollins. Nathan Scott. Adrian Soto. David Sweeney. Aria Tate. And Francis Chan. Natalie George. Once you're done now, please, please head over to the tutorial for picture. Now we're on to Girls Cross Country. Once again, Coach of the Year, GNC Gold Division, Coach Steven Bowler. Sephora Bed. Mariah Estillo. Mary Chang. Claire Flower. Paulie Law. Leanne Dunn. Ella Corby. Mariah Perhopen. Kadia Patel. Andrea Patel. And Taylor Lyver. Okay, Kieran Hutton. Our head coach, Melissa Zawicki, and her assistant coach, Savannah Zawicki, here. Carolyn Hoppe. Cecilia Casio. Adrian Shatner. Emily Davis. Madison Belaventura. Catherine Viper. And Raisa Sephora. Next we have football, Coach Bill Howlting. Our player Jesse Alonka. Jor Pasta. Steven McAllister. Star of that manager. Brian Ballin. Tyler Lowry. Christian Brown. Evan Brown. Adrian Capra. Adrian Gendel. Adrian Durkheim. Brandon DiGeronimo. Matthew Edwards. Matthew Hall. Lorenzo Fuscoletti. Eric Mandel. Julian Mandel. Henry O. Daniel Hook. Nipus Cesaria. Jeff Jones. Adrian Jones. Jordan Magidine. Emmanuel Martinez. Dominic Cesar. Joseph Montgiovie. Dylan Otto. Kyle Phillips. AJ Crowell. Adrian Brown. Matt Morani. Adrian Monalves. Ryan Riss. Emmanuel Torres. Christian Rockstrom. Zachary Onkwe. Nintendo Benetucci. Caroline. And young. Dave Mizing, manager. Our coach cannot be here tonight, Alyssa Wetzel for gymnastics, but our two recognized winners are Amaya Rose Ransom and Amanda. Next we have Voice Soccer, which again, another honor for one of our coaches, Coach of the Year from the NJ.com Middlesex Coach of the Year and the GNC, Kyle Dennis. Gisele Paneda. Jeremy Salazar. Jeremy Ortiz. Adam Sanchez. Ryan Gerrius, Dan Maria. Adrian Simon. Davis Salari. Raven Chawar. And Laila and Yisafara. Coach Shemario? All right. Girls Soccer, Coach Bike, Coach Shemario, she's not with us tonight, but girls, Juliana Adio. Alyssa Martin. Camila DiGioio, manager. Amy Carrera. Zoe Carrera. Madeline Schump. Madeline Donahue, Debbie, Debbie Ann. Georgia Delapure. Sophia DeLucia. Catherine Leonis, teacher. Johnny Wazone. Alex Rivera. Kathy Harris. Anaya Uwe. Chanel Mine. Tiffany Melvin. Rachel Miller. Tatiana DeAndres Madola. Agiero Ross. Andrea Ruzan. Samantha Steinbauer, manager. Evelyn Salzansky. Marilyn Blair. Sophia DeMara. Ava Wilson. Congratulations. Girls Tennis, Coach Don Lee is at home also, so for girls tennis, manager Michael Carney, Alice Genn. Alyssa Genn. Ms. Cory Esquim. Megan Gaffey. Soli Boye. Avery Green. Emma Backing. Vanessa Bubu. Emily Murray. Dana McIntyre. Melanie Fadah. Alvin Newbin, manager. Valerie Arcevitz. Coach Fuam. Savannah Valverde Biscia. Will Wong, manager. Cynthia Vidal Uwe. Okay, last on our list is Coach Ferguson for Girl Volleyball. The actual award winners, Lauren DeCastro and Skylo Johnson.
We're going to take a quick break so they can post pictures, and then we'll move on to the band. So, do prepare.
We're going to start our presentation for our marching band. And you are all athletes. All right, our second presentation this evening is our recognition of our South Cleveland High School marching band and their amazing accomplishments during the season. They're being recognized as the tournament of band state champions, first time in the history of South Cleveland High School. And also the tournament of bands Atlantic Coast runner-ups.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy, of Board of Education, for recognizing all of our outstanding students this evening. Congratulations to all the senior athletes. Here, I'm going to talk about our music program for a quick minute. The students I have to the right of me are some of the most dedicated people we have in this building. They don't leave. They are here nonstop. They practice harder and longer than almost any program, I put it up with any program we have here. They're run by great people. They have dedicated parents. It is a well-oiled machine. Their performance this year was outstanding, and one of the greatest things you get to say and do as a high school principal is introduce a state championship. So, congratulations, you guys earned it.
Okay, I'd like to read the names of the members of the marching band. If we can hold our... I'm color guard. If we can hold our applause until I've read all the names, so we can hear all the names, and then we'll recognize everybody. I'll also read if they had a leadership title this season as well. First, I'd like to recognize or thank a member of my staff that's here today, Assistant Director and South Cleveland High School graduate, Mr. Joseph Rio. Our color guard director could be here tonight, Alessandro Greco, and our field tech, also Ken O'Leary, who also works in the district. Okay, I've got your name. Come on up, and you're recognized over here. Elizabeth Ali, drug line captain. Ashley Alvarado. Chris Amarillis, psych ward, hour round. Ayana Batista. Isabel Atchell. Come on up, I'm not calling you. Katherine Bosel. Sydney Becker. Riley Dugan. Anthony Patrico. Cracker. Dr. Major. Jase Diaz. Tabitha Everett. William Delias. Boy Greco. Trangilio Grant. Dean Hassan. Nellie Hatton. Julie Hernandez, food section leader. Claudia James. Ivy Joseph. Sienna Lachana. Kenneth Lee. Jimmy Lynn. Sabrina Louisall, saxophone section leader. Helen Mahius. Sophia Miller, drug major. Jason Miller. Alex Ndegu. David Nicolai. Michael Noel, color guard captain. Leanne Odeill. Venus Anukua. Akuda Anukua. Zachary Aurelian, trumpet section leader. Ray Pascal. Andrew Pasqua. John Vicetero. Caitlin Power. Nate Rappley. Red Rashfussin. Taylor Reed. Nicholas Recolef. Kaylee Roer. Ellen Rollins. Adil Roman. Renzo Sena. Samantha Singh. Daniel Schwartz. Octave Thompson. Molly Van Waik. Cameron Van Waik, low brass section leader. Idris the Square. Neel Ones. Tayana Williams. Molly Wilson. And Lena Wilson.
Thank you, Board of Education, and Dr. Tansy and Ms. Moleska for recognizing our marching band color guard this evening, and also big congratulations again to Mr. Howl for running such an outstanding program.
All right, our student speaker for this month is our ninth grade class president, Rowdy Manaldi. Rowdy is a member of both our Voice Soccer and our Winter Track Program. He's also a member of the Jersey Story Club. So, when you're ready, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Tansy, Ms. Moleska, Board of Education. My name is Rowdy Manaldi. I'm a freshman classroom freshman. I participate in sports teams and soccer and track. And I'm a member of the Jersey District. As we move forward in this winter season, all sports teams, all sports teams are working to the best of their abilities, and all sports teams are doing extremely well this season. Competition cheer team got first place at their most recent competition over at Brooklyn College. The boys basketball team currently has nine wins and two losses. The girls team has seven wins and four losses. The girls team recently had their senior night in class. The January 14th team currently proceeded to meet time. The swim team is currently working, it's currently on winning streak. Recently, they were beginning to have a team winning streak of four years. The swimming team has extremely great teamwork, and they put all their effort into what they do and are truly standing out this season. The wrestling team here at South Cleveland currently has six wins and three losses. Their hard work and dedication has led them, has led them to coming out victorious at the Morris Knoll's Sporting. The winter track team has been working hard all season, and this Thursday, the team will travel to the Venice Center down Palm River for stable race, where the team will have the opportunity and hopefully bring home this team day. The girls bowling team have been working extremely hard as well. As of January 13th, they were pronounced the winners of the Blue Division, bringing home a division title back to the school. Proceeding to events around the school, the yearbook pictures for senior siblings, blood pictures, and senior superlatives all recently took place. New books can still be purchased for the price of $108 until June 7th. The seal of duality testing took place Tuesday here at this high school. Our council chair of high school will be visiting the middle school to review class selections for the upcoming year and are helping better prepare students for high school. This upcoming Friday, January 17th, there will be an early release followed by middle school on Monday, January 20th, for our new year event. The council department will be hosting information sessions for students in grades nine to eleven to discuss the program of study and the process to enter course requests and genesis. There will be an elective fair during lunch periods toward the end of January. These sessions, which serve as planning period to discuss options, will take place on Wednesday, January 22nd, and Thursday, January 23rd, during students' PE slash health classes. The class of 2025 will be hosting a make your own mozzarella cheese fundraiser on January 31st at 6:00 PM at 6:00 Horns, where you can take a mozzarella class for $35 a person. Class includes hands-on instructions to making mozzarella appetizers, and participants get to take home two mozzarella mozzarella foods. Marking period two is coming to an end on January 22nd, and on December 18th, there was a day of service meeting where topics like ideas of what activities and events each class would like to do on the day of service, and was shared that each class would like to support. The freshman class will be supporting CHOP, which is the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and is hoping to have a walk-up on, and the sports activities like volleyball and spike ball running during the day of service. I appreciate all of your time and would like to thank you for this opportunity to inform you on the successful achievements here and events here at high school this past week.
We also have one last presentation from Ms. Moleska this evening. She will be presenting information on the SSDS Period One as required by the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy. In this report, I'm going to read out how many gives were filed, as well as how many were confirmed, the type, and then who they were investigated by. The high school had, I'm sorry, instances between September through the end of the calendar year, on 24th. The high school had eight. Three were confirmed, one regarding gender, one race and ancestry, one race, all investigated by Sean Flat. The middle school had 11. Four were confirmed, three for mental, physical, or sensory disability, one for sexual orientation and gender, all investigated by Jeremis Grayborn. For grand school, there were seven reported, four founded, two for race ancestry, one for sexual orientation, one for other distinguishing characteristics, all investigated by Alia Aziz. Franklin had four, one was founded for race and or color, investigated by Romina Lu. Kennedy had one, it was founded for gender, investigated by Lauren Kraus. Rodney had none, and Roosevelt had two, both unconfirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moleska. And finally, I just wanted to remind our families that there's a parent guardian Zoom meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. An email was sent to your registered email address, so if you'd like to attend the meeting, you must register via the link that was sent in your email. We will have representatives from each of our school buildings, as well as central office administration. Going to talk about ones coming up in the next few months, and later, we're halfway through the school year already, and also important dates for preschool registration, kindergarten registration, graduation information, and workshops that we have coming up. So, if you can, log on, please log on to the meeting. There'll be opportunity for you to ask questions via the chat feature. Thank you so much.
This time, we have four men and some presentations. I'd like to start with all of them. Congratulations to all the athletes tonight. That's great achievements there. They should be proud of themselves. A lot of hard work, dedication to the coaches, and also the band for their accomplishments. Thank the parents, because I know that how hard and how much effort they do to put into making this happen, so can't forget them. Athletic department, well-oiled machine these days. Can't thank Ms. Iontta about with her experience, vast experience, and it's a pleasure to have her and we're lucky to have her. So, I wanted to thank her as well. Brody, great job. Next time, you can sit here by us and go, "Yeah, we good?" You know. Anybody else? Done.
Duplication of what Tommy said. Congratulations to all the students and athletes. Mr. Penner and I were sitting here talking, and we said that when the athletes come through, it's one of our favorite things, because not only do we know how well our athletes play and how good they are, we get to see them in Chamber Hands, and it truly is, it's an honor for us to be able to do that, no doubt about it. Congratulations to the band, you guys crushed it, that's unbelievable, and to all the athletes, you know, great job. And Brody, you killed it, man. You know, I don't know, I don't know if you practiced that, I don't know if you rehearsed that, but man, you were smooth, and public speaking is definitely in your, in your future if you want it to be, that's for sure. Great job, keep up the work.
Anybody else? Sure.
I'd also like to just congratulate all the athletes and our coaches on a successful fall season. Special congratulations to our Coaches of the Year, Steven Valdir, Galen Johnson, and Kyle Dennis, and special congratulations to our marching band.
And special congratulations to our marching band, to the musicians and directors for your outstanding season and accomplishments as state champions. That's really impressive. Thank you so much. You did a great job. And Rodri, thanks for providing the update on high school. You did a great job. It was really informative and you should congratulate yourself.
Yep. Just to continue that, congratulations to the student athletes, all the coaches, musicians, not only for their achievement, but all the participation. It's a large group of students that participate in extracurricular activities. They're student athletes, but they find the time to do both. And to participate in all their sports and activities. And Rodri, another kudo after the work well done. And also that you include that there are other students and activities that are happening in the school and the participation shows that South Plainfield High School really has a personality that everybody wants to get involved in and can take us from.
Great report, Ms. Moliska. Rodri, amazing job, my friend. Keep killing it. Congratulations to our athletes and our musicians on the excellent work that they're doing. And I know most of them are gone, but I want them to thank their parents, thank their teachers, thank their coaches, thank everyone that's been supporting them on this journey. Because without them, without you, they'd be nothing. So they need to remember, my mom always tells me, it takes a village. So they need to remember their village because they wouldn't be here without them. That's all.
Anybody else? Sorry, I'm going to skip around this agenda a little bit. That's why I'm scrambling up here. Any public comments on agenda items only? Seeing none? Resolution to approve prior board minutes? Can you get a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Espen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes. Onto curriculum, student activities. Can you get a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Espen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Onto policy? Yes. Onto policy, please.
No motion.
Second.
Second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
I'm just reading what's on the agenda.
Another policy.
Let's go to personnel. A through D. We're skipping around tonight. Alright.
Second?
Yeah, move on to second.
Alright, vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Espen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes. Finance?
A through R.
No motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Espen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes. Any public comments? Can you discuss?
Not anything.
Any matter?
There we go. Hello. My name's Scott Miller. I'm a proud parent, band parent, with several parents back over there. Music booth three. We could not be more proud of what our kids did. This was absolutely phenomenal. How many times do you sit there and say, your kid is part of the state championship group? We have a wonderful program here in South Plainfield. I know you all know it. We had a meeting, what, December? And we had our jazz band here, we had our choir sing. They are a phenomenal group of kids, but they are a shrinking bunch of kids. I don't know if you realize that. Jazz band alone, thankfully to a change in policy, I don't know what the correct term is, was a class in September. And he had, I think it was seven students. And he made an appeal to the board or to Mr. Fusco, I don't exactly how it worked, and they moved that to a club. And he had more kids than he knew what to do with because these kids want to play. They're playing right now. They left their accolades here to go rehearse for more jazz band. And that only happened because a change was made. Now I understand several years ago, you were able to come in early in school to play because schedules are tight. And it's one thing the school district does well is it offers so many different classes and programs to our students that they have to now pick and choose what they do. Not a bad problem to have. We have some outstanding classes for these kids to go to, but our music department is shrinking. We need to find a way to open up discussion to get this morning class back again for our concert band, our choir, orchestra, because we have directors who will come in to provide the service. We have students, well, you can see, they're here at seven o'clock at night playing, they're playing their hearts out. They'll be here in the morning to make you proud. Every one of you up here said that that was your favorite meeting of the year in December. What if the classes shrink down so much that we can't do that anymore? We need to find a way to keep music alive in South Plainfield. I don't know how many of you are aware or in one of the audience, but the Grant School Concert, standing room only, is very auditorium. Why? Because the kids are involved. If they get up here to the high school and they can't fit concert band in their schedule, we lose them. They can't fit choir in their schedule, we don't hear them sing. We need to find a way to support the program in every way we can and get these kids in this building singing and keep these ensembles big. Only when they're big can they get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, any board member comments? Sharon?
Yeah, I would just like to congratulate Ms. Ann Patrico on her retirement. I think she retires February 1st. We're truly grateful and thank her for all of her years of service, hard work, and mentorship to the youngest children in South Plainfield. As one of our most beloved preschool teachers, she created nurturing and learning environment. She made learning exciting and fun for our preschoolers. Everyone knew how much she cared for them. They were adored by both the parents and the students. So as she begins her next chapter of life, I hope she has enjoyable, fun, relaxing, and healthy retirement because she truly deserves it. And just want to say, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and I wish everyone a happy, healthy year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the passing of Rosemary Gopman, who was a strong kindergarten teacher at Franklin. She retired a few years ago, but she was a presence in this town and they named the garden after her in Franklin School. So she, along with the other teachers of Patterson over the years, will be greatly blessed and they help make the district what it is today.
Anybody else? Seeing none? At this time regarding, go to executive session where we discuss student and personnel matters along with some legal matters. No action will be taken. Should be what?
Half hour?
About a half hour. Need a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Seeing few. Close meeting back to others? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Here.
Mr. Espen?
Mrs. Miller?
Mr. Pender?
Mr. Fanezy? Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman left, Mr. Castillo.
Here. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Leading adjourn.